The UFO problem has involved military personnel around the world for more than 60 years, and it is wrapped in secrecy. Because this subject is so widely ridiculed, it's important to stress why it's worthy of serious attention. Stories of strange objects in the sky actually go far back in time, but from the 1940s to our own era, military personnel from the United States and many other nations have encountered unidentified flying objects visually or on radar, or both, sometimes at close range. These events happen not scores of times, but hundreds of times, perhaps thousands. Sometimes the encounter was nothing more than a solid radar return of an object moving at an incomprehensible speed, performing impossible maneuvers. Sometimes it included the violation of sensitive airspace. Often it involved the dispatch of one or more aircraft to intercept the object. At times, crew members have claimed to see a metallic disk-like object, sometimes with portholes, sometimes with lights, frequently engaged in what appeared to be intelligent evasive maneuvers. In a very few cases, it appears to have involved the military retrieval of a UFO. In a few others, it involved injury and even death to military personnel. And in a very large number of recorded instances, military personnel who encountered UFOs were adamant that they did not see a natural phenomenon. This is clearly a serious development, and it has been treated as such by those groups charged with maintaining national security. The CIA, the NSA, and all branches of military intelligence have historically received UFO reports and discussed the matter as something of serious concern. And yet, the military and other branches of government have created the fiction for public consumption only that the UFO problem is nothing to be concerned about, certainly not the result of little green men. We are fortunate that, starting in the 1970s, the U.S. Freedom of Information Act began to help researchers learn some of the truth that lay behind the facade of propaganda. We learned, for example, that some U.S. military analysts initially feared that the Soviet Union might be behind the flying saucer wave of the 1940s and 50s. They studied this possibility, but rejected it. They also rejected the possibility that these were secret American technology. And indeed, options quickly narrowed. Either this was something real and alien, or it was something conventional but as yet unknown or unexplained. Already by the end of 1947, a contingent of analysts at the Air Technical Intelligence Center, ATIC, at Wright-Patterson Air Force Base, believed that UFOs were extraterrestrial. And by the summer of 1948, that team prepared what they called "an estimate of the situation", stating the extraterrestrial hypothesis. The response: "The team was dispersed and reassigned." Yet, thanks to FOIA and the courage of a few senior officials to go on the record, we have a collection of statements about UFOs that are so numerous as to be impossible to mention all of them here. But a few might give you an appropriate flavor of what I mean. Here is one from General Robert B. Landry, Air Force aide to President Harry S. Truman. Landry says, in an oral history interview given about 40 years ago, "I was called one afternoon in 1948 to come to the Oval Office. The President wanted to see me. I was directed to report quarterly to the President after consulting with Central Intelligence people as to whether or not any UFO incidents received by them could be considered as having any strategic threatening implications." Landry went on to say that he continued to brief President Truman in conjunction with the CIA quarterly for the rest of the Truman presidency. That's no less than 16 briefings. We might want to know why a man as busy as Harry President Truman was -- why he would take the time out of his schedule to have so many meetings about UFOs. And yet, we have no official transcript or record of those briefings. This is a statement from a top-secret 1948 Air Force intelligence report called "Analysis of Flying Object Incidents in the U.S." Quote, "The frequency of reported sightings, the similarity in many of the characteristics attributed to the observed objects, and the quality of observers considered as a whole support the contention that some type of flying object has been observed. The origin of the devices is not ascertainable." And just two more quotations here I want to give you. An Air Force intelligence report from 1951 relating to an aerial encounter by a U.S. fighter pilot. "Object described as flat on top and bottom and appearing from a front view to have round edges and slightly beveled." Quite a bit of detail there. "No vapor trails or exhaust or visible means of propulsion, described as traveling at tremendous speed." And one more quote from the early years, this one from a former head of the CIA, Roscoe Hillen-Cottter, speaking in 1960. "Behind the scenes, high-ranking Air Force officers are soberly concerned about UFOs, but through official secrecy and ridicule, many citizens are led to believe the unknown flying objects are nonsense." Now, how much clearer a statement should responsible citizens, academics, media, and political leadership require before demanding to get some reasonable answers as to what is going on behind the scenes in relation to the phenomenon of UFOs? Because the problem certainly did not end during the 1960s, or 1970s, or 1980s, but has continued to the present day. During the summer of 2002, just outside this city, over the town of Waldorf of Maryland, dozens of witnesses reported an incredible scene. Multiple jet fighters chasing multiple large, unknown objects that were of blue and orange coloration. All the witnesses, two of whom I interviewed personally and several of whom spoke to national media, described the amazing performance and capability of these objects. The Air Force itself admitted that it had scrambled F-16s to investigate unknowns, which it had also admitted it had tracked on at least one of these objects on radar. We also learned that the UFO simply disappeared from the radar. The Air Force conclusion was that it could have been, quote, "any number of things." Now, perhaps we might like to know precisely which things. What blue object can descend at an 80-degree angle, stop, reverse course, and accelerate away from two F-16 jets near the nation's capital in post-9/11 America? Might be an interesting question to ponder. Over Chicago O'Hare Airport, in November 2006, same kind of situation. A dozen United Airlines employees, including at least one pilot while on the ground, saw a hovering, disk-shaped object below the clouds. It then accelerated away so fast that it punched a hole through the cloud. United ordered its employees to silence, but one of them reported the event anyway. After denials by United and the FAA, both agencies were forced to acknowledge that indeed those people had made UFO reports. And again, we might ask, what might this have been? Over one of the busiest airports in the world, and why the steadfast silence and denial? These are only some of the better-known recent cases. There are, in fact, an overwhelming number of them. The two largest websites for collecting North American UFO reports, the National UFO Reporting Center and the Mutual UFO Network, have a combined total of well over 10,000 reports every year, every year. Now, clearly, many or most of these would turn out to be something prosaic if they were given an adequate investigation. But go through some of these reports. Many of them are truly incredible, and many of them have indeed received follow-up investigation. They are unexplained, and at least by our conventional wisdom, unexplainable. The combination of astonishing performance, powerful statements from selected senior officials, and unremitting silence and dismissal by our political establishment point to a problem. This is not merely the problem of cognitive dissonance. It is the problem of a political system in which the wheels have fallen off the machine. It is imperative, in the name of science and responsible public policy, that we get those wheels back on and begin a genuine, open investigation of this phenomenon. We demand and deserve answers from responsible officials who ought to be in the know. And if they're not in the know, we all need to investigate and find out just who is. Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me here. As a retired nuclear physicist who has been studying the evidence about UFOs since 1958 and since 1967, has given well over 700 lectures in all 50 states, 10 Canadian provinces, and 18 other countries, I've reached four major conclusions. One, the evidence is overwhelming that Earth is being visited by intelligently controlled extraterrestrial spacecraft. In other words, "some," underline 10 times, "some UFOs are alien spacecraft. Most are not. Don't care about them." Two, there is no doubt that a small number of people within governments, both in the United States and overseas, have been actively covering up the truth about these visits. There really is a cosmic water gate. Three, there are no good arguments against these conclusions. Only people who haven't studied the relevant evidence. And four, flying saucer visitations and the cosmic water gate represent the biggest story of the millennium. And I should say that I prefer the term "flying saucer" because all flying saucers are UFOs. Very few UFOs are flying saucers. All great-grandfathers are men. Not all men are great-grandfathers. I'm interested in the flying saucers, not the UFOs. The basis for these conclusions: A, there are at least five large-scale scientific studies which provide substantial evidence.
Why the steadfast silence and denial? What -- what's the risk?
I think the implications are vastly, very profound. If we try to rewind the clock 60-plus years back to the 1940s and just imagine, just pretend for the moment that it actually happened, because many of us, I think it did, that an event, say at Roswell, happened, or maybe elsewhere, or other types of grave violations of airspace were going on. You think back to the very post-World War II era. The world was in a state of just flat on its back, trying to get back. There were millions of homeless people around the world, people on the brink of starvation in the early Cold War. It was not a stable time, and one would have to assume the last thing any president would be interested in doing would be to say to the world, "Well, we have this other phenomenon here, too. We don't know who these people are. We don't really know if they're friendly or hostile." How can you tell the world that you have this under control when you yourself don't really know the full implications of what this is? So I think the logical thing that would have been done, and in particular, if anything was recovered, because this is key. If one of your top scientists or generals approaches you and says, "Sir, we've recovered this exotic technology that's not from our civilization." And if you tell the world you have it, now you've got the specter of the Soviet Union, it becomes very difficult not to share this technology. The United States did not want to share atomic technology in 1947. Clearly, why would they want to share something as exotic as ET technology or whatever?
Well, okay, but this is the 21st century now.
Right. So what I think what happened is simply that secrecy becomes secret, becomes profitable, it becomes -- it develops its own reason to be. It develops its own kind of logic. And I also think that much of it has sort of gone away from formal government channels and seems to become increasingly privatized.
Senator Gravel.
With all due respect, let me correct. I pronounce it within my family "Gravel."
Gravel?
It's a French name.
Thank you.
I want to associate my thoughts with Chairman Bartlet when he made the statement that "it's the height of human arrogance to think that we are the only sentient human beings in the galaxies of the world that can think." That's human arrogance at its worst. What I'm struck with, with the testimony of all four of you, and of course, the readings that we had within preparing for this hearing, is the fact of secrecy itself. You know, why do we need this secrecy? And I'm asking this question to all four of you. What threats do you think exist to the national security that warrants this kind of security, this kind of an approach? Please.
I started to say before, I can see six reasons for our government and other governments to keep things classified. First, you want to figure out how they work. They make wonderful weapons delivery and defense systems. And with the Cold War going on, if you do have wreckage and you want to figure out something, you're not going to want to tell your enemies. The second problem is, what if they figure out how they work before you do? You don't want them to know. You know, they know. Weapon, counter-weapon, counter-counter-weapon. We've been playing this game a long time. The third problem is, if there were an announcement, I say by highly trusted individuals, it's a little hard to find them around the planet, but my favorite odd couple is the Pope and the Queen. They're about the same age, or they were until recently, anyway. If they were to make an announcement that indeed UFOs are visiting, that planets being visited, what would happen? Church attendance would go up, mental hospital admissions would go up, the stock market would go down. But I think, based on 600 college lectures, that the younger generation, which unlike me and probably you, wasn't alive when there wasn't a space program. There was strong sentiment against space travel back not too many years ago. The younger generation would push for an Earthling orientation. Let's face it, from an alien viewpoint, we are all Earthlings, Terrans, as the science fiction writers would say. I know of no government on this planet that wants its people to owe their allegiance to the planet instead of that individual government. As far as I can tell, nationalism is the only game in town. There are some religious problems, extremists who say we're the only intelligent life in the universe, and their followers don't want any part of visitors from outer space. It can't be. Planet was created in 4,004 B.C., instead of 4 billion in 4 B.C. A final thing, I have seven times heard of cases in which pilots were scrambled to chase UFOs. There was a regulation issue. Shoot them down if they don't land when instructed to do so, when seven pilots didn't come back. These were quiet discussions. These were not big public things. And if I've heard seven, there are a lot more cases like that. There were 200 fatal military plane crashes between 1951 and 56, including five where the pilots had over 100 missions in Korea, where there were MiGs trying to shoot them down. That's a pretty good pilot to survive that. Comes back to the United States, no MiGs, and his plane, as the New York Times said, "disintegrated," or "disappeared." Two strange terms to use in this context. So no families were told anything about that. That's an area of concern, I think, to admit that we can't do anything about these guys. Powerlessness is not something that attracts people to government.
May I add a very quick follow-up in not taking a lot of time? I talked earlier about why I think that the possession of certain radical technology would have initiated some of this secrecy. Also, I think the need to maintain some level of social control, not knowing what these other beings were, at least in the early years. But I think what happens is, once a secret goes on for long enough, it becomes a real nightmare to kind of contain. I can only imagine the difficulty that President Obama would face if he were somehow to make this announcement. I mean, really. If he were to -- if something were to force him to make an admission that, yes, these UFOs apparently, at least some of them, are real, what does he then say at this press conference? I know what he'd like to say, which is, "Well, thanks, everyone. I'm going on vacation for about six months." Because there are a lot of follow-up questions that would be frankly very uncomfortable for him to deal with. I think one of the questions that most responsible journalists would want to ask is, "How on earth were you guys able to keep this secret for over 60 years? How did you do it?" And the implications for getting into that whole issue are a nightmare, because you're starting to deal with, has there been some level of control or, you know, over the mainstream major media academic community? In fact, any, there are many off-the-shelf academic studies that show intelligence community influence over our major journalism and over our major academic communities. It's not a big secret. It's a longstanding relationship. But there would be some very deep questions to ask about that, about the nature of special access programs and unacknowledged special access programs, its primordial black budget. All of these would now become the target of citizen inquiry. And I believe firmly that an admission on this topic, in addition to all of the scientific and existential issues that it raises, also gets into just some nasty, concrete political issues that I don't think any presidential administration would want to have to deal with.
I'd like to ask Grant Cameron, maybe the first question. And if the others have a comment, be very happy to take those, too. Mr. Cameron, take a minute, but the others, maybe 10 seconds, if they have something to add. I think you're the one that talked about five years of hearings for President Truman.
Briefings, yes.
Yeah. And many, well, I know that Mr. Dolan also mentioned this. I guess 16 different, did you say 16 different?
We figure between 16 and 20 briefings.
Okay. Is it possible the Truman administration was concerned at the time more about either the Soviet Union, which you did mention, I think, Mr. Dolan?
Yeah.
Or Nazi Germany as a source of some of the unidentified flying maneuvers they were watching and reporting on, and being very concerned about?
I think it's basically, the minute they looked at the Roswell crash, if that was the first crash, they saw technology. It's classified. End of game. This is, you're not giving this to the Soviets, you're not giving it to the Chinese. This is our type of technology. On Thursday, I'll refer to a Canadian government document, 1950, where the Canadians went to the United States, talked to American officials. And one of the things that they were told is that mental phenomena was involved with the saucers. So there's a lot of technology here, and it's, you just have to think, are you going to give the technology that you may hear this week at this session, are you going to give it to Al Qaeda? Are you going to give it to the Chinese? To me, it was simple that Truman and the people around Truman saw technology. We need this. This is unbelievable technology, and whoever gets this technology rules the world. We're not giving it away. It's classified. End of the story, and that's how it has started, and that's how it's been maintained.
Let me just add, sir, to answer your question relating to the Soviets and Nazis and so forth. In the early era of this, these types of questions were being asked. They absolutely were. The question is, because you have different levels of security. I mean, in the declassified documents that we have, really, the top secret and above, we have very few of those. So the declassified documents that are available to citizens are of the level of secret and confidential and restricted. Lower levels, they're still important, but they're not typically, very few that are actually of top secret. And I think that this is significant, because what has come to us are some lower-level classified debates over the nature of these. And many of those did focus on, did the Soviets create a flying saucer with their cash of German scientists? Did we do this? In those documents, I have seen no significant evidence to point to the Soviets or our own German scientists.
Okay. Before I invite maybe 15 seconds from both Mr. Friedman and Ms. Howe, could you also comment on the testimony here that hasn't really said a whole lot? It was mentioned briefly, but a whole lot about sightings before the 1940s, before the Second World War. I mean, did we, I know you mentioned that this is, there'd been credible sightings for many, many years before, but we really don't get a whole lot of interest on the part of an administration until the 40s. Now, doesn't that add a little bit of question in terms of whether what we've just been talking about?
I can add--
Might have been a real concern for the number of hearings, Bean Hill.
I can add one thing. What happened in July of 1945, we tested a bomb, white sands, and then we dropped two in August on Japan. And I believe that that action, which was a nuclear event, became a focus to this intelligence, and therefore, that's how the government became so intensely aware.
Can I add?
Sure.
I've done the presidents, I spent a lot of time trying to find stories of UFOs back in history through presidents. It starts in Roosevelt's day. It ties into the atomic bomb. If you go through presidential history, presidents are watched very closely, all their records are kept. I can find nothing before Roosevelt. So this is tied into the atomic--
Okay, but you're not saying, Mr. Cameron, are you, or any of you saying that President Wilson would have never been interested in phenomena that might involve extraterrestrial types?
I think the difference is that we really only in our own society develop much of a capability of detecting them. I mean, in World War II, we get radar. So we develop electronic means of detection. For the first time ever, have a lot of people in the air. So I think in earlier times, it's not that this phenomenon didn't happen, but there were fewer stories and not really in front row, center of our consciousness.
By the end of World War II, there were three things that told our visitors from out there that soon we'd be going out there, which would scare the heck out of them, because we're such a primitive society. Atomic bombs, powerful rockets used to kill, not to deliver the mail, as some people said they would, and powerful radar, the beginning of the electronics revolution. The only place in the world in July 1947 where you could check out all three of those was southeastern New Mexico, which is where Roswell is.
I'm going to reclaim just the last 30 seconds if I can, too. And again, if you'll take just maybe a quick yes or no. In your views, is it possible that if there indeed is such thing as extraterrestrial unidentified flying objects, that they would be more likely to be artificial intelligence instead of normal intelligence, given time scales of travel, nearest star, what, two to three light-years away, for example?
I think artificial intelligence is an extremely valid hypothesis. I've entertained it for many years. I think they would be the product of an advanced, I mean, we are less than a generation away from having our computers talking to us and claiming possibly to be sentient themselves. This is what AI theorists, and they're all mainstream people. It's a very common belief, so I have to assume that some other civilization will have gotten to that point.
And a confirmed physicist working on ring lasers at Wright-Patterson told me in the 1990s that he had firsthand knowledge about the extraterrestrial story, and that he, as a physicist, in the work that he was doing, that they knew, meaning the people that are involved with studying the phenomena in the government, that we are dealing with technologies so advanced that they literally can bend spacetime and move point-to-point through the universe. And that physicist from Wright-Patterson at a table used what is now a metaphor generally in this whole subject. He took the napkin on the lunch table and he put it and said, "Linda, this is what they do." And he put one point and he did like this. This is spacetime, that we're dealing with technologies that can bend spacetime and put the corner to the corner. And that is why Euclidean geometry and time as we know it on this planet have no relevance to the phenomena and the intelligence that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Chair, thanks for all of you for testifying. Question. Has there been a decrease in the number of incidents that have happened, at least in this country? Or, because it seemed like this was talked about a lot, and there were a lot of sightings at sometime, whether it was over the, you know, Prairie Estates. But that seems, I mean, you don't read about it very much today.
That's the kicker. It's not a question of how much is going on, it's how much do we hear about it? I checked most of my audiences at the end of my lecture, I don't have guts enough to do it at the beginning, and find that 10% of the attendees believe they've seen a flying saucer. But then I ask, "How many of you reported what you saw?" 90% of the hands go down. MUFON, the Mutual UFO Network, is getting over 600 reports a month. You don't hear about most of those cases, where the public's grown accustomed, I guess, or the media's unwilling to get involved. How many UFO reporters do you know? And I know of two competent journalists who are really into UFOs. That's an awful small number. George Knappi.
And what about any other countries? Are they reported, or, I mean, is that--
I find sightings everywhere.
The sightings are very common, but what isn't uniform are proper distribution networks or reporting systems that are in place. So what we've developed here in the U.S. are a number of websites that collect reports. And as I mentioned earlier, my-- and as I mentioned earlier, my estimate is a rough one, but it's not less than 10,000. Reports actually are written by people per year, per year, 10,000 in North America, that's US and Canada. Elsewhere in the world, there are obviously many sightings. They're increasing, they're not decreasing, because people are now having better capabilities of reporting these. One of the problems with, under, you know, less-developed nations elsewhere in the world in years past is just, if you saw a UFO, who do you report it to? There was really no mechanisms to do it. That's improving now, so now we're seeing reports out of China, India, Africa, and really around the world. But still, there aren't, there's not a lot of infrastructure among civilian groups, for example, who really would be the ones that publicizes to get the word out. You have a YouTube channels and people doing this on their own. What really, I think, is needed is a kind of coordinated, global kind of organizational effort, and hopefully, we'll get that.
Another problem is language. I am constantly confronted with the issue that something happens in China, or South America, or a country that does not speak English, and I'm an American journalist trying to report so that an American audience can understand. And I have worked sometimes for an entire week just trying to find a reporter in China or someplace who could help me do a translation so that you could get closer to firsthand facts. And it is so difficult. We're in a planet and where communication is basically blocked, whether it is country to country, or even neighborhood to neighborhood in China, because the syntactical differences in the language there are so overwhelming, that a man I know who lives there, works there from England, who tries to help, you still have translation problems there within very short distances. And so you take that to this complex phenomena. I know for a fact, every month, across my desk and in my computer world, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of reports coming from around the world. How do we follow up unless we have translators and an open government policy around the world, where people feel that they can report honestly what they've encountered without some sort of retribution by the government, which is distinctly the way it is working in the United States, or criticism from fellow human beings? Humans are more afraid of ridicule and criticism from humans than they are of non-humans.
Can I just...
You're absolutely right.
Can I make a point that I made in my presentation, which sort of sums this up? The problem is the coverage, it's not how many sightings there are, the more people are covering it, the more sightings you're going to get. Basically, it comes down to the story of Chase Brandon. Chase Brandon was identifying himself as the second most powerful person in the CIA outside the director to speak publicly on behalf of the CIA. He was the liaison for CIA to Hollywood. He could speak publicly on behalf of the CIA. He comes out in front of 2 million people and says, "I saw the files, I saw a box, Roswell was real, there was aliens, this is for real." And nobody covered the story. It's as simple as that. It's just not being covered.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. As I had anticipated, most of my questions have been asked, there was lots of discussion of, on why a cover-up. Congressman Cook asked a question, there wasn't a lengthy discussion of it, and that is, there have been a number of sightings before anybody had an airplane or a lighter-than-aircraft in the air. And I think that people need to understand that, this is not just the current day. As our technology has developed, the sightings have become more frequent, but there have been sightings way back in history, am I not correct?
That is absolutely correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted that to be on the record. By the way, extraterrestrials are not anti-biblical. If you read the Book of Job, you should expect them. Maybe they can't get here, but they sure got to heaven as far as the Book of Job is concerned. You can read about them there. The one question I had which wasn't answered, and I would like, you don't have to give an answer now because time is up, but I would like for the record, for you to tell us, how many unexplained sightings out there? Now, lots of these things can be, can be kind of wished away and explained away. Two people that get on a craft, they could have rehearsed their lie so that they now, under hypnotism, tell you the same lie, you know? But there are some things that just can't be explained away. How many sightings have there been, unexplained sightings, that have been accompanied by radar? Sightings are easy, lights on clouds and so forth, and that can behave in very erratic ways. But you know, how many of these sightings have been accompanied by radar tracks? If you could provide that from the record, it's not just a few, I understand, it's a great many of those. But I think the public would be very interested in how many unexplained sightings out there have been accompanied by radar, where these objects were doing things that no known Earthcraft can do. Do the best you can, I think the public would like to know.
Of publicly known, there have to be more than 100, probably several hundred, if we were to tally them together. And there presumably are many that just are...
Classified.
Classified. But there are quite a few that we do know about that have been declassified or that came out one way or another. There's quite a few, not, I don't know about thousands, but there are...
If you could give some indication, it's not just one or two.
No.
Okay. Some indication so that the public can know how many of those. This has been a very interesting hearing, thank you very much. The hearing will now stand in brief recess. Thank you very much.